A pleasure to be able to stand after four weeks of therapy. So, let us bow and remember why we're here. We're here to save the children in this district. And we must make those decisions based on our kids. It's not based on anything else. It's just based on being your role as right for children. And there's a lot of things that have happened over the last month, and I don't mean just myself. But you've got an election. You all got a chance to vote. You voted. Sometimes it works out for you, and sometimes it doesn't. And it might have worked out for you. I don't know what side you voted on. But right now, we need to heal the nation. And we need to come together and heal this nation. And it's been a decisive type of battle for the last year or two. So, remember that moment beside the prayer. Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If I get up and I walk around, don't worry about it. Not if somebody on the board or anything else is just not apparently without a walk.
Mr. Murray had knee surgery, so that's what these were requiring. Mr. Murray, could you just walk just to the front? Would that be okay?
No, yeah, I guess I can do that.
He was just very reduced the muscle after the knee surgery. I think he had control of what was going on there too, just like you did. He was in there everything. It's been a incredible pleasure. Very honest people to do. And I mean that sincerely. Excellent human being, excellent board members, and totally dedicated to society. How do I feel for you, and I want to read it to you, right? Does every Bill Murray III, an appreciation for your commitment, dedication, and professionalism as Assistant County School Board Member? You always do what is best for the children. You know, there are definitely...
Thank you for having me. Thank you all. I'll be looking on the back, see if there was a check or something. Appreciate my eight years on board and great combination of career, forty-seven years of education. So, nineteen Indiana, twenty-eight years. It's been a pleasure to work with everybody. Thank you kindly. Mr. Blocker says my check is in the mail.
And you believe him.
I already talked to him for sure.
Next on the agenda is adoption of the agenda as recommended by the superintendent.
Move approval?
Second.
It's then moved by Mr. Ryan, second by Mr. Kelly, to adopt the agenda as recommended by the superintendent. Do you have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Here's five zero. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have citizen comments, and I want to read something about that. The first citizen comments are reserved for items requesting approval of vote by the board on the agenda. Then at six o'clock, the second opportunity is given for any other comments would like to, that a person would like to make. Let me read the statement concerning the public speakers who come up. It's word to cover all possibilities. Each listed speaker will be allowed three minutes to make a presentation. Speakers are asked to address the issue at hand and refrain from using obscenities, vulgarities, or other breaches of respect, and refrain from words or statements which from their usual construction and common acceptance are construed as insults intended to incite violence or breach of the peace. We ask that you model the following character traits: cooperation, responsibility, citizenship, kindness, respect, honesty, self-control, and tolerance. The school board will not discuss or take official action on any presentation. Any persons present who wish to speak must fill out a green card, and the green cards are located in the back of the room. On the first citizen comment, are there any people in the audience who wish to address something that is on the agenda for approval?
You can, I'm not sure, is D five, is that on the agenda?
No, which one are you referring to?
It is not on the agenda.
Okay, I'm missing it then. Okay, sorry. Oh, no, that would be, that would come at six o'clock. That's not...
That's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda.
Yes.
Not for approval.
It's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda.
And that is the one that will occur at six o'clock, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, but it's on the regular.
On the reg, okay, then I didn't look at the right one. Okay. You need a green card then. Okay. You need to bring it up and give it to another.
Jeanette Collins. Good afternoon. My name is Jeanette Collins. I am Director of Land Development Division with the Board of County Commissioners. And I'm actually here on behalf of Vincent Quintero, who's Director of Planning and Development Department, and Eric Williams, who actually is here. He's Director of Geographic Systems and Community Planning Division. And these gentlemen had sent letters that were received by the school board, leading to Mr. Dixon's listed Roman numeral five, D five, on your agenda for your discussion regarding the three items, the interlocal agreement for public educational facility planning in Citrus County, two, school concurrency, and three, the impact fees. The letters were made following a motion by the Board of County Commissioners on September twenty-fifth of this year for staff to work with the school board to modify the interlocal agreement, including school concurrency, and to address the school board's position on school impact fees and whether they should be suspended. I know Mr. Williams has supplied you with the draft interlocal agreement. He's here also. I'm basically here to answer questions, and I apologize on behalf of Mr. Quintero, who had a conflict and could not be here himself. But essentially, I'm here to answer any questions and take your position back to the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat Wade.
Good afternoon, honorable board members, staff. I'm a proud product of Florida public schools. I was born in Florida. I'm no stranger to citrus. I purchased land here thirty-six years ago. My husband and I built a home in citrus and moved here to live full-time four years ago. Yes, I paid my impact fees, and I didn't mind at all. I earned a bachelor's degree in chemistry, PhD in biochemistry. As a research scientist, I was involved with a program sponsored by the American Heart Association to mentor high school students in our research labs. I chaired that program for many years, and I loved it. When I retired, I ran for office and served eight years as a councilwoman. A big part of my duties was zoning and land use decisions. It was there that I experienced the other, less pleasant side of school life. I saw schools with a hundred and eighty percent capacity. I saw lunch schedules begin at ten AM. I saw closets and storage rooms being counted as teaching space to make the numbers look better, at least on paper. This is a hole that no school system should be in. Finally, school concurrency was adopted by the local planning, by the commission, and things began to get better. School concurrency belongs, lest we find ourselves back in those dark days. It can happen anywhere when new residential construction overwhelms school capacity. Concurrenty helps to prevent that. You must keep concurrency. It is a valuable planning tool. Of course, the other piece of the puzzle is impact fees. These fees dictate that new residential construction pays for the impact that it creates on schools. It gives school systems the fiscal ability to keep pace with growth. Lowering or omitting impact fees is not economic development. It's just the opposite. People and businesses move to an area for many reasons, good schools being one of them. Which is the worst-case scenario for economic development? A one-time fee on new construction or an forever increase in ad valorem taxes? Which is worse? This is a fact-based board.
We're getting to the end of your time.
I will give you some facts.
If you could just maybe take about five more seconds.
There's no reputable study to support getting rid of either impact fees or concurrency, and I urge you to keep them both.
Thanks so much. Randy Clark.
Randy Clark, Clark Construction, Crystal River. I am a builder, so I see this from a little bit different side. A couple of things is, on school concurrency, school concurrency has only been around for, I think, about six years now, and at a stage as lowered as required, has gotten rid of the requirements for that statewide mandate. That's the reason why we're looking at doing away with that. We're not asking that an interlocal agreement be done away with because we understand there needs to be the communication between the communities and the school board in order to know where there's going to be growth so that those things can be planned for in the future. There's no, there's no question that those, that those things need to happen. What we're not having in Citrus County is a humongous amount of growth. What I don't, I mean, and what we have is we have an interlocal agreement that is supposed to be, you know, there's certain things that are supposed to happen in that interlocal agreement on an annual basis that haven't been happening, and we need to, that's why we need to update it. We need to update the information in the interlocal agreement. That's what we're asking for. One of the other things is, is on the impact fee. We're not looking to do away with, we're not asking to do away with the impact fee. We're asking for a moratorium for a period of time. And this is nothing more than, and I'll go on record saying, I don't think if we roll back an impact fee for a short, short period of time, that it's going to turn into a housing boom. All I'm looking at is a goodwill gesture by this board with the builders in this area, which a lot of them have children that are in the school system. And we're all hurting right now. This, I mean, the whole community, we're all part of the community. And right now, we have growth in this county that is, I mean, is terribly low growth. You guys see it in the number of students that you have. You know, there's low growth with the number of students, low growth for us building houses, and it's a tough time. So, if we could all pull together and look at saying, you know what? In your five-year plan, you don't have any plan on spending your impact fee dollars. So, if you're not even planning, if you're not planning on where those expenses are going, maybe it's a time where we can see something eye to eye, hold hands, and work towards coming together and work towards doing something for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. I thought someone just came up. Would you give to them? Absolutely. Thank you.
Theodora Rusnak for the Citrus County Council. We've been monitoring this thing for a very, very long time. The issue of impact fees is not new to this county. The issue of concurrency is not new to this county. The council has consistently had the policy. We have taken the stance that new growth should be paying for itself. It's not going to pay a hundred percent for itself, but it should be kicking in. As Dr. Wade indicated, the choice we saw has been between a one-time fee to people who buy new homes in the county versus an ongoing and ever escalating ad valorem taxes. We feel that the issue is that for school concurrency and impact fees, this should stay in place. What we have seen from the county's position, from Mr. Quintero's department, not a good faith gesture, the Builders Association is talking about this being a good faith gesture on their part. We would question that the idea of simply sending in a former agreement that had been arrived at on a bilateral basis and having that by a sister organization, governmental level, just crossing out everything and gutting it, is not an indication of a good faith effort on the part of the county. We're troubled by that in the council. We are the homeowners in the county. And very frankly, the Builders Association addresses this topic and has for decades as though the only housing choices in the county are brand-new built homes. I would suggest to you that there's a whole lot of us who do own homes that would gladly put them up for resale. A resale home does not carry any impact fees. If a $2,000 impact fee for schools is what's keeping a new homeowner from buying a new home, then especially in light of the recent housing debacle, I would respectfully suggest that maybe that home buyer not buy that home. There are other choices, and we should keep those options open so that when growth does return to this county, and we are a beautiful place to live, and growth will come back again, but that when that happens, you are prepared and not trying to meet some unusual timelines to get things moving along legislatively or within the county realm to get yourself reinstated with your concurrency and impact fees. So, we strongly recommend, as the homeowners of Citrus County, that you stick by the decisions with the current interlocal agreement and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other green cards? And would you introduce yourself?
Jessica Moore. Good afternoon, board members. Karen Esti. I just recently moved here. I'm a newbie here in Citrus County from Miami-Dade, in which Dr. Wade, her and I were neighbors. And ISO two was on Miami-Dade County Zoning Appeals Board and heard zoning issues for the entire county there. And it was not a pretty picture when it came to the explosion of development that took place in our county. And it just seems like we were packing in and packing in houses, and there was no money available for new school buildings. There was no money for roads. I just want to urge this board that I, as a new homeowner here, would like to see my taxes go towards something else other than raising them to have to come for you when it's really not necessary at this point. And I've always said, never say never and never say ever. Because this county is a beautiful place. You have a good school system in. I keep reading your papers and all the fine jobs you've done for your students here. You go over and above. You have good accountability for your money. Keep the good work up. Keep your impact fees and keep your concurrency going. It's really necessary. You're going to get people moving here because you have a quality of life, not quantity of life. In addition to that, I saw major, major corporations bail out of Dade County. Ryder Systems, for one, they just couldn't deal with it anymore down there for a number of reasons. But the people who come with major corporations, one of their main focuses is, where are my children going to go to school? And how are we going to get them there? And what's the quality of those schools? Keep the good work up. Keep your impact fees in place and keep your concurrency in place. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other green cards? Thank you. Let's move on to approve the consent agenda.
Move approval?
Second.
It's then moved by Mr. Ryan, second by Mr. Kennedy, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Here's five zero. Right. Donation recognition.
We have several donations for today. First one is a thousand dollar donation to Renaissance Center for Homo Sassa game and fish club. A two thousand, a donation of a two thousand Mazda minivan from Richard Wayne Grable to the DTI Automotive Services Technology Program. Blue book value seventeen fifty. Approved donation valued at $1,088 to Emerson Middle School from Office Max. One thousand dollar donation to La Canta High School from Williams and Betty Owens Trust, Beth L. Jones Trustee. Five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars, seventeen cents donation to La Canta High School from Raymond James Company. Thousand dollar donation to Citrus High School from Aaron's of Ocala. A hundred and thirty-two dollar donation to Homo Sassa Elementary School from Crystal River Moose Lodge and Homo Sassa. Cypress 202 Moose Legion. Approved large donation of clothes, personal hygiene, and school supplies including a $412 check with approximate value of $6,000 to Homo Sassa Elementary School, Crystal River Moose Lodge and Homo Sassa, Cypress 202 Moose Legion. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you. All the people who've done, the school system, as you were mentioning, we have, the public has an interest and the public is supportive, and we very much appreciate it. Moving on, Mr. Blocker. Mr. Burkhart, I think he's got the button speed.
Oh, Mr. Burkhart is coming up. I'm going to abstain from voting pursuant to Florida statute 112.3143 as I perceive a potential conflict in this matter.
Thank you. I'm here to ask you to approve Crystal River High change orders fifteen for phase one and fourteen for phase two. I move approval of Crystal River High School change order fifteen for phase one and fourteen for phase two.
Second.
It's then moved by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Murray, to approve the Crystal River change orders fifteen for phase one and fourteen for phase two. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Here's four zero. Okay, next on the agenda, please.
Yes, ma'am.
We have the amendment.
This will be the amendment of the Series 2010A and Series 2010B bond resolutions. And essentially, the nutshell is taking the balance that was remaining in the Crystal River Primary School bond and transferring it over for use at the high school. That's what the hell means in a nutshell.
And that's just going to be included in our, in our revenues for the high school?
Correct. That's going to be used to help pay for the remainder of the project at hand that we're doing, the phase two that should be through first part of the year.
And it's going to use up all those available funds?
Correct.
Ms. Blocker, when all said and done with Crystal River's, both Crystal River projects, our debt service will be what and for how long?
Well, the total will be the forty-seven, you know, the original thirty-five at Crystal River High and twelve for forty-seven. We have five, we have a five-year note bond payment at Crystal River Primary School, and then we have sixteen years of the high school.
And when is the first, the Crystal River Primary one?
We've been paying on it for the last two years.
So, we have about three years left on it?
Correct. And then we deferred principal on the first five years of the high school. We paid the primary school off, and then we will pay the remainder for the next, for the sixteen from the original start date, so.
And the interest rate after our discounts?
Essentially, we sold the bonds at approximately six point seven five. We get about a five point seven five subsidy back from the IRS. And then we can also, we also have an invested sinking fund, so essentially, the cost of issuance and the interest was almost nil. I mean, it was very, very little.
Thank you, Mr. Blocker.
I'll ask Mr. Bradshaw, may I read the top portion? Must I read the whole portion here?
I think we just read the...
The top portion, good. Thank you. Okay. May I have a, a vote, or not a vote, excuse me, a motion? With the amendment for Series 2010A and Series 2010B bond resolution.
So, Mr. Bradshaw, do you want us to read the entire resolution?
No, he said we just had to read the top portion.
As a motion?
Yeah.
Consider the resolution authorizing the school board to entry into the series when we read the whole thing on our... Okay, we'll have the chairman. I'm just going to look at, we approve the bond resolution.
Second.
It's then moved by Mr. George, second by Mr. Kennedy, to approve the consideration of the resolution authorizing the school board to enter into an amendment to Series 2010A ground leasing amended and restated Schedule 2010A in order to transfer the amounts remaining in the Series 2010B acquisition account created in connection with the financing of Crystal River Primary School from proceeds of the Series 2010B certificates of participation to the Series 2010A acquisition account created in connection with the financing of Crystal River High School Phase One. Proceeds of the Series 2010A certificates of participation to be used together with funds remaining in the Series 2010A acquisition agreement to provide funds for the financing of a portion of the project designated as Crystal River High School Phase Two. Discussion?
I thought we had, we were covering all of phase two with our additional money that we got in the bonds. Do we have any coming out of our capital outlay funds?
No, it's all through the bond process.
So, how is this money going to be used?
To complete, we've already started out there through the phase two. Phase two in conjunction, I think, there's already left, it's probably about thirty-seven, thirty-eight million in total for everything, where we only, where we saved at the primary school. We saved, I think we spent about ten million there. So, we're just using the balance just to pay off the rest of phase two.
I thought it was fully funded, though. That's why I don't understand how we're going to use this money. How is it not fully funded to begin with? We approve phase two.
Right. We changed orders. We've done a lot of, we've done a lot of changes. We did some additions and, you know, of course, some modifications. But it was a little bit, it did cost us a little bit more when we did the phase one, phase two than what we had originally anticipated. So, we knew at the beginning, the onset, after we got into the primary school and did all that bidding. Remember, we originally came out a little bit cheaper in the beginning, so we had some extra proceeds.
Right.
That when this day came, we could just transfer over.
Okay. So, this is all we're doing?
Yes.
What we already talked about.
That's correct. Yeah, there's nothing, there's nothing new.
Okay. All listen clear. Thanks.
Okay, and Ms. Bradshaw, you were going to not vote on this?
I'm not.
You're not? And you need to announce it again?
I don't...
Okay.
I'm ready now.
I'm ready for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Here's four zero. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. The next item is the approval of the disposal of the active surplus property list.
I pulled that, and I can't find it right now because I... But really, all I, thanks. These were a lot of laptops. It wasn't the laptops in particular that I really pulled this for, but it was the conversations that I've been having at our schools when we go visit and talk about Skyward and the parent portal, which I had a demonstration of the other day, which was pretty impressive. And we know that there are schools that are pockets where people don't have internet at their house. And we also know that not everyone in the world has a computer or internet at their home. And this is a valuable tool for parents, and it's also essential that they have access to it and not be precluded from having access to it because they don't have the internet. So, my question was, could we set up little internet cafes for parents to use and make them very available? For parents, and one school said, oh, well, you can come to the library. It's on the second floor. I'm thinking more in terms of lobby, you know, where the parents don't even have to check in. You can just come into the lobby, log on, and look up your students' records, look at their grades, see if they actually did their homework, all the kinds of things that Skyward's going to provide, but make it really easily accessible to parents who don't have that, or just while they're waiting in line, want to come in and look stuff up. And this would be you, just clean these off and just give them internet access so they don't, they don't have to worry about our usual concerns about the software licenses and all those things.
I wonder, though, if we have ones that are, because some of these, I think I saw, they were down in the two thousand and four. So, I mean, they're like Windows XP, probably.
Well, I have Windows XP, so it works.
It, it's, but I'm wondering if we have, if we actually have on sites maybe one where we could put that over.
Dr. Gettys, I mean, this is not like I'm saying specifically for this list, but we always have the ongoing issue of computers that were, that we are taking out of service. And I'm just wondering if maybe we should be thinking in terms of recycling them to ourselves to provide this to our parents.
How about if we do this? Can I offer? Because I really do know, those computers are pretty old. How about if we look at, possibly looking at some computers that we have that we might be able to relocate and put up in our offices that would be more compatible with internet access there and then have like those kiosks that you mentioned in those offices and the lobby?
Who would you be taking a computer away from then?
Well, we can kind of look at that. I, I, again, this is the first time.
You may have the existing inventory.
I'm sorry?
You may have the existing inventory.
Yeah, I'd like the opportunity to review that with the schools that we have and see what the resources with Dr. Gettys's input as far as that. But I really think it's a good idea, a good kiosk.
Well, and, and I guess, you know, I, I certainly don't want to tell schools how to set it up, but when I hear that a parent would have to come into the school, check in, go to the library, I'm thinking we're not making the access very readily available to people. If you want to just pop in and do it without having to even, even go through the process of, you know, getting a name tag and all that, why wouldn't we do that? And because we have Wi-Fi at our schools, laptops kind of made a little bit of sense.
Sure, we can start that at the high school and then middle school.
You know, too, with a kiosk, I think, and, and Dr. Gettys probably knows, I think for less than ten dollars, they can also have a privacy, just the, the virtual part of privacy screen. So if we're concerned that someone couldn't look from an angle. They're not, they're not one that you see, they're just one that covers it, but to make sure that our student, but we can, I think, accomplish that. I mean, it's a very inexpensive thing where you have to be looking dead on.
Donna, can you explore that?
Okay.
But you're concerned about where those computers would come from.
And I think, Mr. Clark, we'd ask for Emerson Middle School to set up a computer in the front office so the parents could access different information. So it would just be the same thing. It's a, it's a great idea to do that.
Yeah, I'd say three or five, you'd see minimum, you know. Especially if, if, you know, one of the, the things that we talked about at the advisory council training is how to get parents involved. Does that mean that they have to physically be in your building doing something? Or can they be involved from a distance? Or can we get them involved through using the internet and the website and this parent portal so that they have access to their students' information without the restrictions of, of not having the ability, for whatever reason, from their own home?
And even if we found one, we put one in each school's lobby and then we found that was getting used all the time, we could keep.
Kind of monitor that usage.
All right?
It's all right with me.
I think that's a great question. I think that's great.
That's good.
Do we have a motion?
All right, well, so we didn't make a decision about this prop, but you'll look at, maybe possibly you should need, if you can, some other computers.
Yes.
Yeah, you said yes, okay. Okay, I'll. We then, then I'll move the approval of the disposable, disposal of active surplus property with the caveat that if these can be used for parent access, they'll, they'll be put into that use instead. Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Dorshman, second by Mrs. Bryant, to approve the disposal of active surplus property with the caveat that if the surplus property could be used for parent access at schools or needed to be used, and we would, we would all do that too. Do I have, ready for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pouse. Carrie Spiesira, thank you. Next quarterly investment performance reports.
Yes, ma'am. This is for information purposes only, just to agree with some of the investments that we have within our long-term portfolio. We look at section C one, that'll kind of give us a little bit of highlights. Currently has about fifteen and a half million dollars invested. And our quarterly return for this quarter was point two six percent against the benchmark of point two five. In calendar year day, we've earned point six four percent against the benchmark of point four three. And then the last year, we're up point eight three percent against the point six three of the portfolio, the, our, our index that we, we measure against. So, we are outperforming currently the Merlins one to three. That's what we are pacing ourselves against. And the duration actually mimics one point seven seven years of that benchmark, so.
So we're doing better than Merlins?
Well, that is a benchmark that we use of one to three, yes. And then if you look at the next page, it kind of gives you a breakdown of what we have out there. About seven point three million, seven point four million in treasuries, and a little over eight million in federal agencies. And then if we go to page F one, you'll kind of see the entire portfolio for the district. We still have about two point six million in SBA, both A and B fund. Seven point four in treasuries, a little over eight in federal instrumentals. And then in our bank accounts, about twenty-four million for day-to-day operations and, and money market investing. Any questions? Ma'am?
We're rolling in our investment money, aren't we? I'm earning a bunch.
Unfortunately, we're pretty limited on what we can do.
Oh, we're doing the best.
We're doing the best we can.
No soybeans, sir. They'll be dead pork belly.
Futures.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, here, the financial statement for September two thousand twelve for informational purposes.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
A lot of the discrepancies that you may see between last year and this year in revenues and expenditures are primarily due to timing. You'll see on the general fund, the ROTC and the federal through state, the Medicaid program. They're all down as compared to last year, but again, it's just a timing issue as far as when the money comes in. The ROTC program had a new staff, had to file paperwork. It'll take a little while for that to catch up. On the good news, the state revenue from FEFP and class size reduction actually is up as compared to the prior years. And another timing issue, and this is another good news issue, is the transfer of money from capital to the general fund. We'll see that that is up considerably and it's just because we did that transfer internally earlier this year than last year. Did want to draw your attention to the general fund.
What page are you on?
Well, and we will start numbering these pages.
Okay.
General fund combined balance sheet looks like this. It's about page three of the actual financial statements. And you'll notice down towards the bottom, there's unreserved fund balance, reserve for encumbrances, and reserve for inventory. Like to draw your attention to the reserve for encumbrances. You'll note that in September of twelve, we have seventy-five million dollars reserve for encumbrances as compared to last year where it was three point eight million. The reason for that is with our new software, Skyward, we're able to encumber our payroll, which means we basically commit our entire payroll for the year as to what we're going to be paying out. So what you see there is our payroll in there. Seventy-two point six million of the seventy-five is committed for the payroll for the rest of the year. And that's, again, just new procedures with Skyward. And you'll see that also happen, it shows up again in the food service and special revenue funds. Other item I'd like to draw your attention to also is in self-insurance fund. Our revenues and our expenditures are down compared to the previous year, and that's because of the decline in number of employees participating in health insurance. We're down one hundred and forty-four employees participating in the health insurance. Talking to Ms. Haynes, though, particularly with the new enrollment period right now, they do see that number climbing again.
Was there a reason stated for that?
No. Do you have any questions?
That was it.
And the numbering of pages, too?
Yes.
That would be great. Do we anticipate anything else in food services, any other programs, federal programs that might impact the cost going up?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board?
Next item I have is for your approval, it's the budget amendment number one. It affects the general food service and capital outlay funds. In the general fund, you'll see there's an increase in revenue with matching increases in expenditures for five different items. These are just new revenue resources. And then we additionally have an increase in appropriations for three new units. One at Forest Ridge, kindergarten teacher, site helper, WTI, and a guidance secretary at Citrus Springs Elementary. Food service, that was just an increase in their summer funding, summer feeding funding. And it had matching appropriations also. Capital projects, we have an increase in utility expenditure. And those are it?
And remind me that the summer feeding program will cover what people?
It was for the programs out of the, I think they were primarily at the elementary schools. I think we have three schools participating. Renaissance.
Okay, and, and what people can go to the summer feeding program? What is that for?
I believe they're open to anybody.
Open, that, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to check on if it was coming up the same way.
Didn't they change E S T summer program so they wouldn't have to provide lunches here? Was there a change in the hours? Or the number of students who participated?
We just put it at one school.
Month school?
We just moved it all.
Call to which school?
Preston.
Four, may I have a motion?
I'll move approval of budget amendment number one.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Dorshman, second by Mr. Kennedy, to approve budget amendment number one, September two thousand twelve. Further discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. Did you say this new unit's a kindergarten first grade or that that's one unit? Was that a split unit at Forest Ridge?
It was a class-sized reduction unit that was around there and they probably combined.
Okay. So they had more enrollment than they had anticipated, or at least at those grade levels?
Yes.
And there was a, the site helper, where is that?
WTI, those were the onsite helpers, probably had more kids.
After school?
Yeah.
Okay.
Other questions? Ready for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pouse. Carrie Spiesira. Thank you. When we were talking about, I was thinking about what they were saying about the population down the south floor and wondering, how did they do this?
Not well.
Oh, class size amendment?
No, being able to deal with all the children, there was a huge influx and no time to do anything. Yeah, and it would be hard with class, how do you, how do you do it?
Double sessions, right? I, I grew up in Fort Lauderdale, double sessions. For a long time.
That was a little aside.
Good afternoon. Excuse me. Like to request approval of instructional support recommendations as outlined on the golden ride.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Murray, second by Mrs. Dorshman, to approve the instructional support recommendations. Discussion.
I always ask this question. We have all these teachers that are getting supplements for ESOL. Do we have this many students that are requiring ESOL assistance? Or is it just that these are teachers that got certified and are entitled to a supplement?
They're required.
They have to have one student, at least one student in class, as well as a certification to receive the supplement.
So we have this many students that are ELL students?
Yes, that is correct. Yes, and we verify that through Skyward. We go into Skyward and make sure that they have a student and they have the certification.
But just because you've got the certification doesn't mean you get paid for it, does it?
Yeah. And anybody also that is the facilitator of ESOL at that school, as long as they have that certification, they also receive the funds. Progressing the program at the school.
But for verification, is this not a required supplement as opposed to a optional supplement?
I.
It's contractual.
It's contractual.
Yes.
There's nineteen at Forest Ridge?
That is correct. We do have that many students. We did verify that. That is correct. That has always been a big population for ESOL. When, when Forest Ridge was built, Citrus Springs used to have that large of a population, and now it is Forest Ridge.
But sometimes the definition of ESOL, too, because if someone is thinking these are non-English speaking, totally, if that's not the case. Maybe, would you share the definition of what ESOL stood as? That's a sorry institution.
I was actually the facilitator at Wolf City Elementary for two years with ESOL, and that is correct. It's not always the non-English speaking students. We place them in the ESOL program. They usually are there two years and then we look at staffing them out. They have to pass two tests. We, we look at the FCAT of the third through fifth grade. We place them based on the IPT test. And then there is the CELA test, so they have to take two tests to test out of, test out of ESOL, one being the CELA, which is very similar to the FCAT. We have a facilitator that, that gives the CELA testing. And so usually, it's a minimum of two years is what we look at. They can be in the program for longer. We also monitor those students.
Let me ask you, if I came to school and I, my family, my mother, father spoke French and English, and I spoke fluent English, but I could speak French, would you put me in an ESOL class?
They have to check one of the three boxes. We have three boxes. Is there another language spoken in the home? Is there another language primary? We look at one of those three boxes if they check yes. Now, I can give you a case in which we had one check yes. I called the parent because I knew that the English was a primary language. I knew that the parents were Americans, they grew up here, and the child watched Dora, the Explorer. So she knew a little Spanish. So we made, we made that call. I have made calls, but if they come in, they check that, that yes, there is another language, then we, I give them the IPT test. Or the facilitator at the school gives them the IPT test to see if they qualify to be in the ESOL program. And then we sent a letter to the parents stating, yes, they qualified for ESOL, or no, they didn't.
But I wouldn't necessarily be, would have to be placed in that poll.
No, that is correct. We, we do it based on testing. We provide testing. And, and as I said, if we're not sure that a child, they should have marked yes on the box, and some parents get confused. I make the phone call or the facilitator made the phone call to, to, to make sure that they were checking the correct box.
Okay, so has the, a student who's having some issues with the language.
When they come in, they fill out a home language survey when they come into school, and if they checked yes on one of the three boxes, then we give them the IPT test.
And they can be tested out, then?
They can be tested in to ESOL. Or, or, once they're in, then we have to, they have to pass two tests to, to begin, to be dismissed from the program.
Okay, but when they check the box and they're tested, they can be tested at that moment out?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. They can be tested. We have had, I have had that case where I've given them the IPT and they scored above and they did not qualify for the ESOL program. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, that's.
Yes.
But if they're not proficient, how long do they have to master the language in order to have to take FCAT?
They have a year.
I thought, and, and of course exams, same thing?
I am not sure about the end of course, but I know for the FCAT, they have, they have a year. Yes, and that, and that is a big struggle because we had a student come in and he did, he did not have to take the reading portion, he had to take the match. But that is very, they have to read it to them in English, and so that is very difficult for some of those students.
Yeah, I think in the end of course exam, you're not allowed to have an interpreter or dictionary. So you have students that come in.
That is correct. They can have this English, whatever their other, their native language is, dictionary, but they cannot interpret for them. I had to make that very clear to, for one of our students last year, it was very difficult.
And you just said they could have the dictionary?
They could, they can have an English, let's say, Spanish dictionary as long as it's approved, yes, or an English and whatever their native language is, yes.
Ms. Susie, any of these teachers that are coming fresh out of college at this point is ESOL certification that's already built into it?
They, they do have, we are finding that they have ESOL when they come.
So conceivably, in the past, I know where a lot of, a lot of our veterans' teachers had to go back to get certification. All new teachers. Exactly.
They are.
Yes, I hear that at home, too, Ms. Bryant.
They are coming with the ESOL certification, so that is.
So is that not becoming then part of a standard?
It will eventually, we will, yes, we will have less teachers now. And once they take sixty hours, once they ta, or, it's two classes, once they take two sessions, they can take the subject area exam for ESOL and they don't have to complete the three hundred hours. So a lot of our teachers have, have opted for that.
But Mr. Kennedy, you're sort of implying that if it's part of a program graduating teachers and it should not be part of the supplemental, is that what you're saying?
Well, that's the question we brought up in the past about supplements, is if this is becoming a standard that, that our teachers that are coming out of school, this is part of their, their certification, their normal certification. Typically, the, the supplement is because they've gone above and beyond what is expected of that. But now, if, if the majority of the teachers coming out, that's what's being expected of them in their certification. I'm trying to understand what, what is the purpose of the supplement? Because usually it's for, because we need to have somebody in those fields to get those certifications, which was initially, I understand why we did it. Now, everyone's coming out with them. I mean, the list. I mean, like Ms. Deutschman's saying, this is a big list of certification.
Yes, we still have some that are, they don't receive the supplement if they're out of field, but we still have several that are out of field still for E S O L that are still working on that, on receiving their E S O L certification.
Mr. Blocker, round numbers, for some reason, I want to say it was near four hundred thousand dollars in supplements?
Is it total for all supplements?
Yeah.
Athletic and education, it's over a million.
It's over a million. E S O L, do you happen to know what that one is?
No, I don't have.
That's okay.
And I didn't, I didn't add up the numbers, but it's five hundred fourteen dollars.
Per?
Per. That's correct, for the year. They receive it at one time.
I just think that that becomes, as we know, we're going to have some challenges. I think we have to have that conversation again.
Any concerning the teachers, so new teachers coming in who have, already have that as part of their certification, not concerning the teachers who?
Well, I think, I think again, that issue of supplements continues to have to come up, because, you know, if we're having to cut programs to meet supplements, and supplements are something that is part of their basic certification now.
Right.
I'm not understanding what we're doing special thing. What is the need? I don't, you know, I understand a supplement when we have an in-need situation, but I, but if it becomes the standard, then I'm, and we, again, and if I'm having to cut another program somewhere else in order to fund it, I'm concerned.
Thank you. Mr. Bishop? Any further discussion on the instructional support recommendations? I noticed Mr. Knott, this might be retired, our school psychologist, who's been with us, I don't know how many years, do you know how many years Mr. Knott has been with us?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four and a half in his campaign. It's going to be sort of a miss.
Absolutely.
Ready for vote? Any further? I thought we did. We did, okay. Alvin Thader?
Aye.
I oppose, Harry Spiesira, thank you so much.
I'd also like to request approval for Deidre Murray, the assistant principal at Citrus Springs Middle School, with an effective date of December third, two thousand and twelve.
I move approval.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Bryant, seconded by Mr. Kennedy, to approve Deidre Murray as assistant principal, Citrus Springs Middle School. Alvin Thader, further discussions?
I just have a question.
Yeah.
Or Ms. Hemel, maybe. And we've seen this, that elementary school teachers now moving into the high school, middle school, come with those reading strategies that are highly effective at those higher grade levels. But my question is about this particular recommendation is, I can't see that she's certified, maybe other than elementary school. Do we not require certification in that grade level?
She's been a teacher on Crystal River curriculum at Crystal River Middle School for several years.
Right, but she, it said her certification was in grades kindergarten through six, I think, K through six. Exceptional student education, K through twelve. But this is not an E S D teacher, she's going to be assistant principal.
And she also has an internship.
That's how, okay, I'm just, I'm just asking, because it just was kind of, kind of stepped out a little bit.
But Ms. Deutschman, that brings up a point I think we've talked about though in the past, and that does, is there different job description qualifications that this board wants to, maybe not today, but on another day, look at for different grade levels?
Yeah. Well, we've, listen, look at Mark McCoy, he's a perfect example of moving from elementary to middle and high, and, you know, he's been very highly adapted at each level, but I don't know what his certification is, if it's K through twelve or whatever. Just a question.
Ready for vote? Alvin Thader?
Aye.
I oppose, Harry Spiesira, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Powers, I know that we have a time cert at four o'clock, and after that, we have Mr. Dixon's section that has to do a lot with discussion on policies, and I think people are here probably highly interested in certification of high school default as a sexual harassment, but I would ask that in the interest of time for them and coming to our meetings, we could move item D five to the front of that list to address before we get into the policy discussion?
I have no objection.
I don't know, but I know some people are coming later to listen to.
We don't have a time cert for this issue. It's on the agenda. Is there a time cert?
Oh, no, no, I thought you meant to reply to it, no, just for Mr. Dixon's discussion. Yes, that's fine, that's, that's sort of fine.
Good afternoon, board members. This particular item is for discussion and for direction. And as you know, the issue of school concurrency came up in April, and Mr. Quatero and members of the Boarders Association approached the board and placed this on the agenda for your discussion, and at that time, you did not indicate that you had an interest in eliminating school concurrency. It is true that the Florida Legislature first required all districts and county governments to enter into interlocal agreement and have concurrency as part of that interlocal agreement for public school facility planning. Now that is optional. Most of the districts that I'm aware of have chosen to keep it in place, because there's really, as Mr. Bradshaw and I both stated in the past, no benefit to a school district not to have concurrency. And for the life of me, I really can't understand, you know, why it's such an issue, but nonetheless, the county has drafted a document that strikes concurrency, and that came back to us, with also the additional request to have an impact fee moratorium before we entered into any further discussions. At the staff level, we wanted to bring that to the board's attention and get your direction on those matters.
Mr. Dixon, I want to ask you, since concurrency began in Citrus County, or for the last ten years, how many developments or developers have been denied or had their projects adjusted due to school board concurrency?
There have been no developments that have been delayed, denied, or had any additional requirements placed on them because of concurrency.
So there's been no economic change, and I believe we've had probably the largest construction period growth over that same period of time?
Well, the concurrency requirement came into place in two thousand and six, when the agreement was being adopted. So since it's been in place, we have had a handful of requests for concurrency determinations, and none of them have required any additional payments, or land dedications, or anything on the part of the developer.
When was the last time that a developer came to, that we needed to sit down with to adjust concurrency?
Well, we, we had a request for concurrency, preliminary concurrency determination a couple of months ago for a project that had originally been approved, and they're going to make some adjustments to it, and there were no concerns.
We had no concerns.
No concern.
If we did not get funded for, through impact fees, and we needed to exercise concurrency, how would that protect the I D O R M taxpayer?
Well, concurrency is simply a mechanism to know where you are in terms of the development and the impact from that development. It gives us the ability to monitor the permit activity or the platting of new subdivisions, the creation of new lots, not individual units, because individual units are already vested and do not require concurrency determination. A concurrency determination only kicks in when they're platting a new subdivision, are building a new residential project of sufficient size that it has a number of units that could impact our school system.
So if a subdivision wanted to get created in North Crystal River, near, let's say, a port, and we were going to create, or there was going to be a creation of some new school stations that would come out of that, and we currently didn't have enough funds within our impact fee reserves to accommodate that, it would provide us then a discussion at the table to make sure that we're not going to have to hit the I D O R M taxpayers to actually build such stations?
It would basically give us the opportunity to first know that the project is occurring at the early stage, so that we can plug it into our five-year work plan, because typically a project that's going to generate enough students to go beyond where our capacity is, is going to be something that we need to know about, so that we have ample time to prepare for it. And it wouldn't necessarily mean that we would be entitled to any additional funds above and beyond, you know, what the impact fees already would require. It would just mean we would know about it sooner, and that we would have a mechanism to ensure that it was paid, and a land dedication possibly would be made sooner rather than later in the process.
And if we changed what we currently have as far as the mechanism for concurrency with our interlocal agreement, we would have to then renegotiate with the other three entities, Crystal River, Inverness, and the county, and we would need to spend the staff time with that document, negotiating that, and rewording it, if we were even considering it.
Mr. Dixon, we're giving you the time cert, and I don't want to miss any of this conversation, so right at that point, it's a breaking point, and then after the presentation, then would you come back up and finish off? Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have tobacco prevention with Melissa Wood and the Citrus County Department.
Good afternoon. My name is Melissa Wood. I'm a health educator with the Citrus County Health Department and the Tobacco Prevention Program. Thank you for having us here today. Tobacco Free Florida is a grant-based program that works throughout the state to prevent youth and adult tobacco use, as well as offers cessation services throughout the community. Tobacco Free Florida recommends that every school board within the state include twelve comprehensive tobacco-free policies. Citrus County currently has eight out of the twelve policies included. However, the four that we are missing are, the first is, schools may not accept gifts, including curriculum, from tobacco companies. The second is a plan to communicate the policy to students, staff, and visitors must be outlined. The third, an enforcement plan for staff and visitors is outlined, and the fourth, an enforcement plan for staff and visitors that provides cessation resources is outlined. We are currently working with the Citrus County Library System to offer cessation classes on a monthly basis in all Citrus County libraries to make it very accessible to all members of our community. Today, we have a student from Inverness Middle School who is currently running for student body president, and one of her platforms is tobacco prevention in the school and getting a SWAT program in all of our schools in Citrus County. So she has a few words, if you would just give her a couple minutes of your time. I'd like to introduce Cassidy Lundey.
Good afternoon, Citrus County school board members. I'm Cassidy Lundey, a student at Inverness Middle School. One of the most important things to me is that tobacco fully and completely stays out of our schools. My reason for this is I lost one of the most important people in my life to the use of tobacco. My pop-up was a humorous, intelligent guy who could take a car apart and put it back together. Because of tobacco, this world lost a very important person, and so did I. Things about my school have come to my attention, one of them being that our schools in Citrus County don't come to full potential of stopping tobacco use. None of our middle schools, including Lucanto High School, does not have SWAT. SWAT stands for Students Working Against Tobacco. Bringing SWAT into our schools would certainly help prevent the use of tobacco in Citrus County. SWAT makes their appearance known at different county events. We also need to enforce no tobacco usage on school campuses. I, being a social person and very involved in school spirit, often attend sport games, one being football. Out of the many times I've gone to a football game, I have never noticed a sign stating that it is tobacco-free zone. I've seen no food or drinks are allowed to be brought into the football stands or fields, but never about tobacco. Which do you think is more important? While sliding into my next point, our school rules do not say that tobacco companies such as Marlboro or Camel cannot sponsor our school or school events, which brings me to another question. Do you want our school, our county schools to be seen as tobacco supporters? Tobacco is a huge problem in the state of Florida, well, in America for that matter. But can you imagine what we could do if we could prevent tobacco use in schools starting in grades as low as pre-K? Making tobacco prevention is a big deal, and would mean a great deal to me. Thank you for letting me speak today, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I just wanted to briefly touch on each of the components that Ms. Wood was talking about earlier. The first one, presenting the, or the school board currently has in their school board policy that there's no advertisements of tobacco products. However, it's just a matter of wording as far as gifts, sponsorships, and things like that, so I don't, I don't foresee that to be any problem. The second one, the second component, is a plan to outline communication to students, staffs, visitors, and again, that's relatively simple, you know, we can fix that with signs. Pretty much, it just has to be outlined. The third thing is, it's kind of engrouped with the fourth, it's enforcement and cessation resources. Pretty much, we already have something in the school board policies that is for students, you know, they get the citation class. However, there's nothing explicitly outlined for staff, employees, contractors, or visitors. So all we're asking is that, I've already drafted something that maybe you guys would like to look at at a later date, but it pretty much has like a first offense, second offense, stuff like that, and it's just like warnings, you know, nothing, you know, not a citation, nothing like that, just verbal warnings. We would just ask that that be outlined in the school board policies. And if you're just giving me one second, I just wanted to reiterate why stuff like this is important. Exposure to secondhand tobacco, even a little secondhand smoke, is dangerous. It is a known carcinogen, which causes cancer. As little as thirty minutes of exposure to secondhand smoke can affect the coronary arteries of health and young, of healthy young smokers. According to the two thousand and twelve Florida Youth Tobacco Survey, as many as twenty-two point three of youth from ages eleven to seventeen reporting having asthma, and that's in Citrus County. We are currently above the state's average. So reducing secondhand smoke, it can lower the amount of asthma triggers in our schools. And also, it's just a positive adult role modeling for students. It's critical to send a message to our youth that is consistent with the tobacco use prevention curriculum that is taught in our classrooms. And thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. We have, Melissa, maybe you can get up with time, Mr. Dixon, who preceded you, who does policy for the schools, to discuss your concerns. Maybe you and he could set a time to talk, and perhaps Mr. Claver could add some information to, having been at the school's, school sides and having knowledge of that. So I'll ask you, maybe you two could get together, maybe next week or following week?
I apologize for not, for not introducing Liz Wood. She's our tobacco prevention specialist, and we work hand-in-hand at tobacco prevention. So I apologize for not introducing her.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your concern.
I have a place for you to start. Right outside this door. We have the strangest problems, so you can't smoke on W T I. So they walk across the street, and they smoke on our property here. Then, the hospital is a smoke-free zone. Guess where the employees smoke?
Inverness Primary.
At Inverness Primary School, right at the front door. And I've chased them off, I know Mrs. Hemel has, and we've asked the hospital, please enforce, you know, make them, make them understand that we're also a, what'd you say?
Mr. Bradshaw was a trespass.
We are, we are currently working with C M H, and actually tomorrow, we're doing a huge promotion, or not tomorrow, Thursday is, is the Great American Smokeout.
Oh, good.
So they, they are currently working on making it a lot tougher for employees to smoke while they're at work, and plus, we're really trying to get in there and, and help them to quit altogether, and really take us up on the opportunity, because the cessation classes that Tobacco Free Florida offers are completely free, and that does include N R Ts, which is nicotine replacement therapy, the patches, the gum, the lozenges. So it's just a matter of making a phone call and being on the phone for ten to fifteen minutes, giving them some information, and, you know, it could, it could give you several, several years of your life. So we're hoping that, that more C M H employees and people of Citrus County in general will, will take us up on that offer.
And our grandpas that we all miss, they died because they smoked. I have two, my father. And those signs, I P S first. We should tell you exactly where it's at.
You know, we're, we're happy to provide all of the schools, we actually just ordered some, Home Assas, the elementary school called us, asked us if we would bring some signs. We ordered them that day, and as soon as we get them in, we're going to bring them over to them. to them. So we're happy to, you know, paint the school with signs. As many as you want, we'll bring them over.
And we do have signs.
We had a parent a few years ago email me about parents smoking in the cars and dropping the kids off.
Yep.
And so we started at a couple of schools, so we'll get with you on that too, but we started a couple of schools, we'll put that sign in the line where parents are waiting on their kids about smoking.
Hello, don't be on your cell phone when you're negotiating between kindergarten and kindergarten.
And that's why I mentioned Mr. Clodagh, because then he has knowledge of which schools have what, and maybe you could direct on that, and we really appreciate you bringing this to us, because we're certainly supporting what you've said.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy, I want to discuss.
Forgot where we were.
That's okay. I'll tell you, there's another big question, and let me go there. The Board of County Commissioners sent you a letter, and for, so that we can make sure this is clear, that letter was sent on approximately, what date?
Both letters were received around Halloween, so.
So, because there was, as we know, some comments that we received the letter.
Melissa. I'm sorry. Oh, sorry. Wrong person.
That that letter was received, and we sat on it, and I think it needs to be clear that we received that letter and acted promptly, and this is the first time this board has convened since that letter was received.
That's correct.
And I would also add to that, we did discuss this in April.
That's what I was going to say.
And so, why would a county commission on their own direct their staff to redraft a policy that is specifically and only for the school board, when we haven't even had the opportunity to reiterate that we, what we had said in April, which is, we didn't have any interest in doing that, why would they just do it for us? I just don't understand what's going on.
I can appreciate that. I did go back and look at the video from the commission meetings, and I didn't see the direction to go back and strike all of the concurrency provisions from the interlocal agreement on behalf of the school board.
I think Ms. Collins told us that's what happened. Is that what you said?
There is backup in your capacity, and Mr. Williams is here to hold their response, which gives you checking out.
I've seen the motion of what the commissioners voted on, but I can tell you, I've talked to the commissioners, and I think there was confusion as to what they said, because they were not under the impression, I think, that we were, that they were actually stating that. So when we were, and I, and that was after we received your backup.
Eric Williams, I'm the Director of Geographic Resources and Community Plan for the County. On September 25th, the Board of County Commissioners made a motion to direct staff to pursue the removal of concurrency and the school element from the comprehensive plan and work with school board staff accordingly. They did not make the statement of the moratorium on impact fees, which may be the confusing point that has arisen in the past. The letters that were sent were on the 23rd, 25th, 27th.
Excuse me, let me just ask you, was, were, was staff, did you give any direction or explanation to the Board of County Commissioners that in April, we had already said we weren't doing it?
I did not, no.
But are you aware if the commissioners had ever received that?
Not aware.
Because I think that's where this board has struggled, is that the commissioners are coming to us and saying that they're going to strike something that we'd already, in April, said we weren't going to do.
Just acting as staff who is directed by our board through administration, that's what prompted the two letters that were sent to Mr. Dixon.
What prompted?
The direction from the Board of County Commission to proceed working with school board staff to remove concurrency from the interlocal agreement, and to remove the school element from the comprehensive plan, and to work with school board staff as well on impact fees.
Why would one say "school board staff" though? It's the county commissioners and the school board that had the say on this.
I'm just repeating what was in the minutes from the Board of County Commissioners.
Trouble too, I think that some of us on the school board have, is that for the last two impact fee cycles, when you bring up discussion of impact fees, the engineer and consultant that was hired by the Board of County Commissioners recommended an amount that then the Board of County Commissioners cut in half.
Based on the recommendation of your own staff member.
So, we have more than once, including the last time, all of us went to the Board of County Commissioners and said, "Don't do that." So I think we've made it pretty clear on this board that we want, after the consultant's recommendation, we want them adopted at the 100%, and that's where we stand. And if you need specific direction, I will tell you that this board member is saying, "We absolutely will continue to maintain concurrency, because that's in the best interests of our students, schools, and adult-armed taxpayer." And you cannot show us one bit of information that shows us that removing concurrency has any economic positive impact to this community.
And the school board as a whole is saying, it's not one or two members, the whole of the school board voted on this.
Understood.
Don't speak for me.
No, I wanted to make it clear, it's not just one or two people, it's the whole of the school board that said no.
As Ms. Collins said earlier, our position here today, myself and Ms. Collins, is here to transmit that information back to, back to our administration staff to be directed to the board.
Well, we're also at 50% impact fee when other entities are not. So as far as our reaching out to the community, I think we've done more than our fair share by being reduced by 50% of what we were entitled to above parks and libraries and the other things that were funded at 100%. And the words of Spike Fitzpatrick, God rest his soul, he wanted us to get whatever anybody else got. If you cut everybody else by 50%, then that'll be fine, but don't pick and choose. You know, the other issue about this concurrency, this is based, I think, on the whim of our governor, growth management kind of being dismantled throughout the whole state, almost across the board overnight, and.
You can't speak for the governor's office.
I know you can't, but it was, there was a very interesting article in one of, I don't know if it was a local paper or maybe the Wall Street Journal, that talked about, there was a meeting of the last five or six governors except for Governor Bush, and they talked about Florida and Florida's future. And without exception, Republicans and Democrats alike said, "This new lack of growth management's worst thing that's ever happened to Florida, worst." So my guess is that this is going to be a small window when we're not going to have growth management, and hopefully, in the future, we will have, come back to our senses and understand that we have to protect our environment, and we have to protect our communities, and we have to protect our quality of life, because this is really what it's all about. You all are from South Florida. I stood in line with my husband in Kendall to buy a house in the Strawberry Field, so you know exactly the impact of that, and then also, the second boat lift, what happened? People fled, as far as they could drive in a day and still reasonably get back to work in Miami. That's where Boca Raton went overnight, from a little sleepy community to another sprawl from Dade County. So, you know, hurricane that hit Hillsborough County would impact us by people moving here. You can't predict the future. We've always said that about impact fees and concurrency, you cannot predict the future, so you have to protect the future. That's what this was put in place for, so that's my opinion.
And you know, this board's responsibility and mission is to help Citrus County's economic situation is to have high-quality schools, and to make sure we have exceptional learning classrooms. That is what we have done successfully well. We are one of only three districts in the state next year that even qualifies to be a high-performing district, and a big part of that is because of our sound, prudent, financial, economic stability that we have brought to our district. It isn't just our student scores. And we're not getting there when we have commissioners with their staff come to us and ask to remove concurrency, which will again, have no economic impact to our community, and then wants to have a conversation about removing impact fees, which only potentially take a reserve away. One question, Mr. Dixon, it's been stated that we have nothing in our five-year plan that impact fees will pay for. Is that correct?
We have one project that we are currently using impact fees to pay for, and that is in conjunction with an interlocal agreement for county road 486 road improvements. There's $200,000-something thousand in this year's.
And is that, do we even currently have that much in our reserve account from impact fees?
I don't think we have that much in.
So if we can't fund that road improvement that way, which I believe the Board of County Commissioners have already voted for.
Yes.
How's that money going to get there? Who's going to pay for it?
I would assume it would come from the county, because we agreed.
Which would be the adult-armed taxpayer.
A tax, you're saying, there's a tax.
So, it's going to come, it's going to come from the adult-armed property taxpayer.
Plus, how much have we lost in capital outlay funds in the last three years, Mr. Blacker? $20 million or more?
At least.
Yeah, at least. So, you know, the county gets to levy their taxes, we don't get to levy our taxes, and we've had the taxes that we could levy taken away. So, you know, we're really at a great disadvantage, much more so than we've ever been historically, at least in my memory. And we've used impact fees to build new schools, and we're at 50%. We're at zero for PICO funds, we're at zero for classroom, for whatever that.
Classroom, kids.
Yeah, and we're down at least 25% or more on our two mils.
And kids don't come in nice packages of 18, 22, and 24.
But when we had our most recent facilities, our planning facilities audit, one of the things that the auditor noted was that we need to look to local sources for funding capital projects, and recommended looking at things, and said it was good that we were using impact fees as part of our formula for capital projects. So, I mean, it's a local source of revenue, we're already getting it, there's no benefit to the building industry to do away with it, if anything, just the opposite, because it ensures that infrastructure's going to be in place when it's needed, and with the adult-armed tax base that's declining, or just starting to come back up, it doesn't make any sense to eliminate it.
Mr. Dixon, how, when an impact fee is paid for, and it's built, and infrastructure is built, how long is that infrastructure, that money is to take care of that infrastructure for what length of time?
When an impact fee is levied, it's levied for the life of the unit, which is typically 50 years, considered 50 years, so it's not necessarily for the family that moves in there when it's first built, but it's for the life cycle of that unit.
And for example, in Beverly Hills, and I'm thinking of the newer sections of Beverly Hills, there was arguments made at the time that impact fees were collected on retirement homes, but we've seen the largest growth of our schools has been in Beverly Hills when those retirees have moved out of those homes and families have moved in either through a rental or through a purchase.
That's correct.
Mr. Gratchausen, should we make a motion to reject the proposed amendments to impact to the concurrency law, or not?
I don't think.
I don't think we ought to say that.
It's a request to discuss, and we've discussed it.
Do you need us to direct you or Mr. Dixon to send a letter back to the commissioners stating that we have no intention of changing our position on concurrency?
I mean, you can direct us to send a letter. I'm going to get to it.
I think you have to remind yourself, board, that we just, the people of this community turned down our proposal for .25 mils, which was, in all actuality, not an increase in taxes, although it looked like it, and so over the next four years, we're going to lose approximately another $9 million for running this school district, and so I think we have to look at everything. That one is going to hurt us first.
Absolutely.
That 2.2 mil, or that's $2.2 million, is really going to hurt us. I think people have to understand now where this board's coming from. We have taken $10, $12 million out of our reserves, Mr. Blacker, over the last four or five years to maintain what we're currently doing, to make this a great school district. That's gone. We have no more anymore. We have said by board policy, we will keep 3.5% in our funded reserves, and we're at 4.02 or something like, is that right? Okay, so we're, we've got a cushion of $600,000. That's nothing right now. $600,000, on that level, we're in World of Serious Hurt right now. So I think what you have to look at is all avenues of whether you have your income and your outgoing and your expenses, and what you have to do. I don't have a dog in this fight anymore, so I can say what I want to say. Basically, that's the way I think you have to look at, but it is for the kids are what we're going to do. We have halted projects, we've halted Phase Three at Crystal River, because we don't have that kind of money, although we'd like to finish that project, we don't know where that's going to come from, so we're going to have to wait and see on what we can do. But when you go and, people don't realize that that $2 million every year, especially on the structural side of the, is that what I'm calling?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That would have been for instruction, that could have been for personnel, that could have been for a lot of things, and we're going to wipe that $2 million off the board. Superintendent, the next school board was going to have to come up and find out what they could do with that $2 million. Folks, I'm not a naysayer, but you've got two areas that you can cut, and that's people and programs.
And the state won't let us cut people because of our classroom size amendment.
Well, you know, I support people. I mean, there's a lot, we went through that whole bunch of things all last year, came up with a list of cuts, and no one wanted to, no one wanted to enforce them.
Well, we're a high-achieving district, and you don't want to not be a high-achieving district, so you're trying to do as you can, but if you keep cutting, 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 where do you turn, just like Mr. Murray said?
When you turn to people or programs. And when you compare us to the surrounding communities, we well outperform them. This is a reason, if you have children, why you want to move to Citrus County.
You know, when we say that, I was thinking, when I first started teaching, we had an exceptionally good school, and at that time, the enrollments in elementary school, 350. When we've completed the year, closed the doors for the summer, and opened the doors for the fall, we had 700. Who signed up, well, you know, you don't have, we're 700 kids in a 350 school, so we had to open up a school that had closed down, and work at that school until new classrooms could be built. Citrus County has an exceptional school system, and every time I, when y'all say something about Miami, I think, oh my heavens, we're going to be faced with that same situation I was 30 years ago, where you have, you know, 700 in space for 300. It's a bit scary.
Clarification, though, can, I'm sorry.
I'm not allowed.
You don't have any objection to updating the data in the interlocal agreement, because we did, we did tell them that we would proceed with that, and we have.
Mr. Dixon, can you explain too with that? Because there's, again, been comments said that we are not following the interlocal agreement, that we do not provide on an annual basis the capital improvement data, which I do know we do, and that the data is not being updated regularly as per the agreement. Can you, can you speak to that?
Well, we, we need to update the information in the data, but it's not going to make that much difference, because it's a 10-year average.
But does that require that to be done annually, the update on the data?
That, I'm not sure. If it is, we need to change that, because updating it annually serves no purpose, other than making everybody chase their tail around in a circle all the time, because it doesn't change that much to be necessary to update annually. As far as the.
Capital improvement.
Capital improvements, we provide the county with a copy of our five-year work plan every year, as soon as it's adopted, as well as the two cities.
And isn't that also uploaded to the state's computer as well?
Yes. So they can get it anytime they want to look at it, and they can go all the way back to, you know, 10 years ago, I think.
And Mr. Dixon, also, in course, the conversation we had two months back, in the year, promoting the impact fees, do those impact fees come directly to us?
No, when the impact fees are levied, they go to the county, and they go into a trust fund, and then when we use them, we have to get our projects approved as being impact fee fundable, and then we have to pay for that project and then be reimbursed.
And who's the custodial, again, of all of the impact fee money?
The Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you.
You know, one thing that troubles me about all this, that when we have both the county commissioners and the school board, and if we have concerns, we should be talking with each other, there shouldn't be emails going back and forth, or letters going back and forth, or missiles going back and forth, whatever, we should be face-to-face discussing whatever the issue is, and I'm.
Ms. Powers, we have, four years.
I understand.
This board, even before me, I have watched as.
We've had meetings.
You went before them.
We have had meetings.
You've sent, you sent Ms. Deutschman, I remember, a couple of years ago. You've sent, you, you sent Ms. Deuchman, I remember, a couple of years ago, before the impact fees discussion, and it went over pretty ridiculous. I mean, we, they, they approved it at 50%.
Wait, the county commissioners and school board, we are servants of the people. We are to do what's best for the community, for best for the people, and it builds us best for the children.
Absolutely.
And we should be sitting face-to-face discussing that, and nothing else. Egos, whatever it is, out, out the door, we sit there and do what's best for this community. And I want to see that happen. I do not want to see this kind of thing go on, where we, we read about something in the newspaper, and are thinking, "What, what letter, what are you talking about?" We don't know, we should always know.
So you're basically okay with updating the data, definitely don't want to eliminate concurrency, and on the matter of impact fee moratorium, you, you're, you're all against a moratorium on impact fees, as I understand.
That's correct. And I, I think the whole board, as a nod going there, all of us have stated this.
We thought that it would have a positive impact, economic impact, but even Vince Cataro went on record with Commissioner Bates and said, "There is not one study, there is not one time in his 20-something years that lowering impact fees increases construction permits."
And I think they're finding that out of Hernando County, currently, so we'll make a note of that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon.
Thank you.
Want to clarify?
Yes.
Are y'all directing the letter you sent back?
Yes.
Can I just go up first?
Who's up?
Okay. Okay, we'll take the Tim and Brian.